Everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united in its individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so evaporated to adjourn this meeting.
Yes, we just perfectly did.
I moved. All right, we just finished the pledge, so.
Perfect.
We had time for it. Okay, we're on the second item, then we're going to approve the minutes of the March twentieth, twenty twenty special meeting and the March seventeenth, twenty twenty regular meeting. You have a motion, please?
I'm ready.
Carolyn Hamlin, second by Larry. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments, I don't even see a pink sheet. Yeah, I do, it's over there with somebody's name on it, so no one has signed in to speak to the board. Okay, presentation reports, we have Greg Gosling, the maintenance director, who's going to give us the maintenance update. Mr. Gosling.
The floor is yours. Hi, it's been a long time. I gave everybody a copy of the ZMM report on Duval. Good news is what they found out is we're not settling as well as what we're talking about drastically. The only concern I have on it, every time they go to take the readings, there's always pins missing. So they have to reestablish these points. What they're recommending is every six months, going to every six months or yearly to do an inspection. We're doing it quarterly now. Recommendations would be, I would say stay with the quarterly for right now. If they didn't have the missing pins and things like that, I would probably be comfortable with this, but the missing pins and things like that bothers me to, are we getting the true reading of what we're looking at?
Explain that, please.
They put a reference point on elevation, they'll use something, I think they use the post office kind of outside, an elevation point, and they put pins in the building to reference it, different points outside of the building.
Well, what is this pin, is it something tangible or?
Yeah, it's, they usually put it in the block wall or something like that, or in the floor. That's usually where they put their pins at, for some reason, or they don't go out there, the pins are missing.
That's what I'm just trying to.
Somebody's taking the pins, in other words?
Well, there couldn't be a falling out of the wall.
Or, you know, where they could be falling out of the walls, I don't know. I mean, that's the only thing, if you want to go to six months, that's fine, a year, but again, the only thing that bothers me is the missing.
I don't want to go that long.
No.
I just worry it may be dead before anyone. But you don't see anything, nothing noticeable?
No, nothing that, other than the front area, we've monitored that now, the front area has a pretty big crack, you can stick a wire all the way through and the inside. During winter time, we had a lot of cold air coming through there, but.
Does that mean this figure two, or that's something different?
That one is, that's a different one.
Okay.
This was a new one, I don't know that.
I saw a big gap there.
This is a new issue, right?
Yeah, this was a new one.
And we just recently put a monitor on here.
So your recommendation is that we do the monitoring, how?
I would continue with what we're doing right now.
Quarterly?
Quarterly monitoring, because my concern is the top part, what we've been told, any movement on the bottom part of the grass could affect the top part. So, I mean, I would like to just continue with the quarterly.
Everybody okay with that?
Absolutely. Some of the things we've been doing, again, you know, with the, everything that's happening out, we're looking to stop a lot of things. Over and above what we normally do every day. We've been working on a lot of issues at Midway, Midway had a lot of water issues, sediment issues, those type of things. Hopefully, one day, they'll get somebody in the water and come and take that. We've been replacing a lot of the old galvanized pipe, that ability on the, older part is a pump full of old galvanized pipe, if you ever dealt with galvanized water pipe. You take it out a three-quarter hole, you may only have a quarter inch that the water gets through. We've been doing a lot of things with that, working on the lines and stuff up there. Duval, some things we've been doing at Duval, we had to replace, we put a new five-ton rooftop unit at Duval, that's the thing with that one. Hamlin, we've done some, we just recently finished in between, we've kind of worked it while and go back to it. LEDs in the basement, in the middle school side, the whole basement has it, all new LEDs in the basement. And we put new playground mulch on at Hamlin also. Here at the board office, we've changed all the outside door locks now. And that's really become really relevant, I think, now with the coronavirus, with people coming in the building. Harts, we've done, Harts actually this year added all new outside door locks, and now the principal manages this. They have the keys and things like that. I know the principal at Harts was very concerned, somebody was trying to get in the gym to play basketball during the shutdown, and some guy she didn't know, and they said the key they had wouldn't work, well, it's not supposed to work, that's why you got new keys. So those things, it kind of scared, scared the principal there, so those things are working now that we put in place, we've been working on this project. Now, everything is updated to where all the outside door keys are blocked. We know who's got keys, we know who's on the community's got keys. We do encourage using the card swipes, that tells us who's in the building to what times and things like that. And then the principal manages who they want to have what keys, whether they want to use one door, or they want to give somebody a master key, that's up to them to manage and decide, and they let us know when to tell them, so that's worked out really well. Door locks here, and then we added a card access to the baseball area. There's a lot of keys that was floating around here, so we've got all that straightened up and then at the, also at the weight room, we replaced all those, and that's got the card access there, so any time anybody's in our facilities, we can tell you who's in our facilities now. We've done that. Lincoln County, at the hospital, we've had, we've had a couple of issues throughout the winter, which is real concerning to me, because we had some pumps, the hot water pumps and impellers that move the water throughout the school, that heats the school. We rebuilt each one of those, there's two pumps, one's for, you only run one pump, and one, if one goes out, you have the other one, which is a backup. We rebuilt both of them three times, and we couldn't keep seals in them, they kept blowing the seals out. So we ended up, and those were the, these are what they take over, pumps. Now, this building is becoming, you know, fifteen years old, so the pumps and things like that are becoming obsolete. So what we had to do, we ended up putting, we got the Bell and Gossip pumps, we ordered, we put them in, but then we had to retrofit some of our piping, because the Bell and Gossips, the inlets and things like that were different areas, so we had to do some changes there. We got all that done, and it looks, it's really nice, we got the high efficiency motors in those, the ten horsepower motors, and a real high efficiency that's going to help us on our power, because the older stuff is really bad. At West Hamlin, we did, we finally got all the modules removed, they're out. So all the modules are out, it's all been seeded back, and we're looking at some areas there, putting in some storage buildings and some things there. We added a new domestic hot water system in there, we had one system, and last year we had issues with that system. It took three weeks to get a motor in, all of our other schools have a backup system, so we went on and put a backup system at West Hamlin now. So now, if this boiler goes down, domestic hot water boiler goes down, number two will kick on and take over while we work on number one. So that was a bad thing that we created, that was created before by the contractor, so now we have some redundancy here. A lot of piping, a lot of things went on with that, so that was a big job that we've done now, and we've done it all in-house for that. If you've been at West Hamlin, between the gym and cafeteria, you've got slotting vinyl doors, we took all those out, they were molded and just nasty. We put in metal doors that didn't meet the fire marshal requirements with the panic bars and things like that, so we've done all that. At Gunn Valley, we, we had an issue with the shingle roof on the gym. Earlier in the year, we were finding water in, in the girls locker room, the boys locker room, so we had some issues there, and I went up there and crawled back in there and looked at it, and what was happening, where the units were, now there's two ten-ton units, condensing units outside on that, on that backside of that building. They didn't shingle up underneath the units, so all the water was coming down the units that were pouring in there. So I talked to this fire roofing who's done that project, and John really worked well with us on this project. He's apologized for the problem. What they done, they subcontracted the shingle work out to another company, which he said now looking at it probably wasn't the smartest thing to do. So what they done is they came in there, they brought a crane in, we disconnected all the units, put all the freedom, sucked all the freedom back in yet, so we wouldn't lose it when we had to rev it back up. So he set those units off, took the stands down to his shop, and made it to where each there's flanges on them where they can lay the shingles in the stand where we won't have this issue again. And in the process, he went on and replaced all the, I was concerned because all the sheeting was black underneath there, it'd been leaking ever since they done the roof. So he replaced all that, fixed all that, shingled back up, got the units back on there, just set the new, the two ten-ton condensing units on there last week. Now, we've got to go in and hook the freon lines all back up, and those are inch and three-eighths freon lines, they're big freon lines. So it's going to, you know, what we're going to have in there is just a little bit of copper, and then while we had them, while we had the units off, I went on and had our guys go in there and take covers off and clean the units really good, so that they'll, you know, they'll be really good, they'll work better if you're cleaning, the condensing units will work better, more efficient that way. So we've worked on, worked on that, and then we had some LED lights that we had to replace out in the, out in the gym area up on top that had some water in there. Ranger, we replaced the four-ton outside HVAC unit, and had to replace one of those, and then we done the playground mulch at Ranger also. I took the, Ranger sewer plant is a very, to me, it's dangerous. It's a control panel that controls your sewer plant, you know, it's got all your push buttons in, all your contactors, all these things in it that runs to different pumps and of that. So I took the one from, from Midway and took it up to Ranger, so in the process of changing that out and putting that newer control panel in there. A problem with that is DEP has some guidelines on that. We can't do it, so we have, working with Kim Ron, they have, there are only one or two guys that DEP approves to do the wiring to hook all this back up, so we're waiting in line to get this done, to make that all up there more efficient. They were running cords out before and having some pumps in there because the control box wasn't working, so sometimes the plant would fill up and they'd have to pump it down, so we're looking to take care of that and fix that by moving that panel box. And the panel box is around five thousand dollars, so we saved a lot of money by using what we had, it was good, and I looked at it, it's perfect, panel box, there's nothing wrong with it, that came out of Midway, so we just took it up there to, to fix that area up there. Bus garages, we've been replacing, they had a lot of bay lights in bus garages that were out, probably about fourteen of them, we ended up putting fourteen new LED lights in the bays, and then on the benches, we took all the fluorescent stuff out and put all new LED bulbs all the way down through the, through the bays, and so now they can see the work. At Harts, we had to replace both boilers, mixing valves on the top of the boiler, we were having issues with the boilers at Harts because they were kicking out, they were kicking out on high limit, but the reason they were kicking out on high limit, we had no water flow, the mixing valves were, actually, they were broken, when I got them out, they're broken, they're like a three-inch mixing valve. So when we took them out, the, the actuator was supposed to turn them and open them, but I guess it broke, and it, well, they actually were turning them open, it was actually not opening them up all the way, so that was called our issue with the boiler, so we, we had to do, it was a pretty big job, we done all that in-house, we had to take the flanges all off, three-inch pipe all off, and rethread all that, and then put new mixing valves on there, and we put new actuators on there also, and it's working great now. We've created, fixed a lot of problems, issues we were having every day up there, so that's. We also, again, we also replaced all the outside door locks there. Harts, is that that, what is it, seven years now, Harts? So we're at that point where all the emergency lights that's in there, and those were all that they bought at a, a lot of times contractors would buy this stuff at a bargain warehouse, some company that's got to sell all this stuff, so they had to buy this stuff. So it had a bunch of these, what we call bogey emergency backup lights, so when the power went off, you know, you have lighting that's in areas to the value to get safely out of the building. So a lot of those were bad, we had probably twenty-two of those that were bad. And those are around, my cost on those is around three hundred and fifty-nine dollars each. So what I've done is I went and retrofitted something different to it, I went with a different ballast, it's a ballast type with emergency lights, and it worked really well, and they're warranty for two years, and we got them for forty-six dollars a piece. So we're monitoring that, so we've done a lot of work there to try and save us some issues there with the lighting, and that fire marshal issues too, so. We've been working on a lot of the fire marshal finding, border risk finding, border risk and fire marshal, they kind of overlap each other. A lot of the things that, for forty years, the doors at Gunn Valley, at Hamlin, at Duval, the doors, all of a sudden now, they're not legal, so the panic bar, none of the panic bars on that, so we've been replacing all the panic bars, we've got all those all replaced. We added some doors in the kitchen area, they were wanting to drop down on the kitchen where the emergency doors that come down, the tray area doors, they were wanting that all up, changed, and just Duval alone was going to be over thirty thousand dollars to do the doors. So we worked with them, and we're able to come up with, if we change all the outside doors to the fire rated doors, with the access on them, if the fire alarm goes off, the doors automatically shut, so that's what we've done. If we can shut off that area, they were comfortable with letting us do that by just installing the new doors versus trying to throw up a new system, and we've done the same thing at, all of that. Hamlin, Hamlin wasn't nearly as expensive, but it was going to be around fourteen thousand at Hamlin, so. So now, we've got that to where the fire marshal would be happy with that. A lot of, a lot of metal doors throughout the county we're replacing, a lot of metal doors at, at Midway, at Duval, at Gunn Valley, a lot of doors at Gunn Valley we've replaced. The problem is metal doors on the outside, they rust and things like that, mainly it's the door facings that are rusting out on us, and you have to go in and bust the walls out, bust the concrete out, and while that kind of fit them back up in there for that, so that there's no lot of that. You know, these doors, some of these doors fifty, sixty years old, it's time, it's just time for them to go, so we've been doing a lot of work on those. The MIP project, I think that's pushed back till May.
They've not given us a new date, but it has been.
It has been pushed back into, what, April the third or something like that?
It was April the eighth.
April the eighth, yeah, somewhere in April, it was first of April. So the MIP project, what we were proposing for MIP was to replace the chiller at West Hamlin along with all the controls there. Those controls are mixed mounted from Johnson and over all those things on. That's probably the oldest chiller we've got in the county, and that's the oldest chiller we've got in the county. We had to replace and rebuild oil pumps in them last year, and the coals in those, if you've ever been in there, we've had to snip them a couple places and solder them because they're leaking so bad on the freon. So usually, that's what, once or twice in the summer time, we have to add freon to that chiller just to, just to keep up with the demand. So that chiller is really old, and we're looking at, at MIP hoping that that will give us a consideration with the replacing that chiller and all the controls at, at West Hamlin, that would be a good part of it. The Hamlin gym project, we are moving forward with that, I was on, I actually emailed today with John. We're ready to start taking the bleachers out, I know a lot of this has to do with current situation. These people are working at different places, these are out of Parkersburg for the bleacher removal, he got that, but, well, he's ready to go when they allow him to go, basically. I would like for us to be ready to go when we're able to go. Now, I've talked, basically, to Ms. Huffman about as soon as we can to get in there, get the bleachers out, so we can get started on that floor, get the floor all out, have everything to get back in and start the school year, like. This past year, at Gunn Valley, it ran over into the school, I'd like to get that, you know, a lot of things that happened there that, getting people to work, you know, these, the floor guys, you know, if three guys show up, at the end of the day, they don't have one guy working. So, you know, you got this to deal with, and they were dealing with that. Yeah, I just took off one day, I was up there, and I said, I'm not doing that, you just took off walking down the street, took off, hit, take them back to, to Ohio, so, I mean, it put us behind, the floor people put us behind there, so we're hoping we can avoid that this year.
Oh, just same contractor?
No, this is a different contractor, R.M. Huffman, that was my thing, Paul, Paul Ford was the one that's done, yeah, I know, so R.M. Huffman is actually in Charleston area. That makes me feel better, and he, they've done a couple floors for us before, they've done a high school, rechanged the high school floor a few years ago, so they've done some things there for us, and they, I hope they, they have a workforce, you told me, I asked him about that, actually. I'm going to show you something here, ma'am, I'm going to go through this, I've had some concerns with the Midway sewer plant, Mr. McKipp and I have discussed this on several occasions, I don't like the repair work they've done on that, I've sent my emails to Mr. Hall at the SBA, to the contractor, and he basically told us he didn't have to deal with us, and some issues with that sewer plant, I want you to see. Another concern I have, Duval, Duval, the outside modular building, the wood on the outside at T eleven, it is rotten. I don't know what we're going to do, my thinking is we're going to take that off and put metal all over that, and it's going to be a big job, but I don't know if we're going to bid it out, get some bids on it to do that, or how we're going to do that, but. I know the principal requested to be painted, but you can't paint rotten wood, it's just rotten, it's just, if you go up there on the outside of it, it's all rotten. And you have the T eleven and modulars, when they bring them in here, they're supposed to be in here rotten, more than a year, so that been in there, what, two thousand and sixteen? There's a concern with that one. The paving, we need some, we're going to have to do some paving, I've been trying to get out to, we're going to go out, and we'll try and bid it, I don't know how that's going to be, we're looking at paving at Midway, Midway needs paved, Duval needs paved, and then the West Hamlin bike road needs paved, but it needs draining, there's water there on the backside of it, water just stands there all the time, so we're looking at first going and draining it, and then shooting it over towards the area where the fields are at. We have a four-inch gas line at Hamlin Middle School, we had, we thought we were going to have to shut schools down, they might, they found a leak, but they came in there, it was well up until eight o'clock that night before they actually came back to us and and told us the weather on our side, because they were preparing to shut, shut our gas off, which in turn, that was during the cold spell, which would shut our school down, but it wasn't that. But we have an issue there on our side. The gas line runs all the way up to the front of the road, but the meter, this is the crazy thing, always, that's our gas line, it's a low-pressure four-inch gas line, it's all the way around the back of the building where the chiller's at, then they put their meter there, that's the meter they go by for buildings, so. But that, on this side of it, is still considered our gas line, so that four-inch line has got to be replaced, it's gone. We've got a four-inch riser coming up out of the ground. The four-inch riser comes up into your manifolds and all that that's on the gas line, where it comes up out of the ground, it's rusted so bad around it, I'm afraid to even peg on, it's that bad. So we're going to have to look at, I'm hoping, we've been kind of limping this along, hoping that we get away from the gas season here, if we have to shut it off, we get into heating system, heating system goes away, and we get into cooling system, then that won't affect us, other than some dehumidification, but this, the summertime, we're going to have to replace that line, it's just, it's just too risky not to replace that line, it's so bad. We're looking at that, I've got a meeting with Mountain Air, Mountain Air are different companies, so. So we're going to meet with them, but they're required, we're going to do, do almost all the work we tend ourselves, but they're going to require us to put in this new type of line, if you've seen them going along the road, it's called a fusion line. And the fusion line uses plastic, and you heat it, couplers, it has to heat it, and they slide it up in there, and kind of melts your plastic together, so that's what they're going to, they're requiring us to use, a fusion line. And what I've done is that we can tech, we can J-Bo, we'll rent the machine to us, so we can do a lot of that, all of that with the new fusion line, that's going to be a priority to get that line in place.
Well, do you, do you need a four-inch line?
Yeah, for the volume, you do. We looked at that, behind that, we thought, right behind where the state police and all that is, there, there's a two-inch high pressure line, but they're, they were saying, if we came off that, they would have to do a lot of extra meter work, all these things they had to do, they didn't know the timeframe they could give to us. And my concern was, you're going to pull that down, we're running high pressure, we got about seven ounces that we have to have. So you've got boiler one that kicks on, it goes into high fire, boiler two kicks on, it goes into high fire, so it's going to suck that line dry, so that's why the volume of it will give you more.
Yeah.
For that length of that, so. I looked at that, but with the volume and all, it's what the boilers we got, and then you got your pike units on the roof, you got some of those things that kick on, so it's not.
Not in where you put a red cord out there on the ground or not.
Yeah, it's not worth the taking the chances, dropping it down to a two-inch line and then having the issues. We haven't uncovered, we just put that four-inch line to go in there. Other thing is on our playgrounds, our playgrounds are all equipped with gates that you can put a lock in, with the current coronavirus thing, I don't know if it's something we want to lock these playgrounds down, do we want to leave them open, what do we want to do with the playground, I don't know. Some places are locking them, you know, kids, but I don't, you know, kids like to play, and there's a lot of them that come, they'll bring their kids there to the playground just to let them play, but I don't know what's the call around to. We can put our county padlots in them and lock the gates, now they're not going to keep everybody out, probably not, they're probably going to climb over the gate, or over the fence, but we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
We closed all of our indoor facilities.
Yes.
I mean, for me, it makes, would make sense that we wanted to consider doing all the playgrounds as well.
I don't know, anything ever hits here, I don't, I don't.
Well, you know, the, you know, when everything's isolated, you're supposed to, you're going to just be isolated now, and not supposed to, that was what I understand, yeah, it's like a magnet, the place you could go, so I think I agree with Mr. McKipp, as long as, especially as long as we're in order of what she ordered from the governor, we're going to have them up there.
Now, my, my guys been coming in on Wednesdays, we've been going around, walking the buildings on Wednesday, we separate very different buildings on Wednesdays, so I'll have a plan on doing that tomorrow.
I noticed here, just the past few days, with some complaints about out here at the Hamlin Lions Club, which is, you know, it's not ours, but there was complaints about there being playground activity going on out there.
I guess I'd be up to Calhoun.
It was, I saw his name mentioned, but I really don't think it's him, but.
I just think we should cover our bases with that.
Well, even in, I've noticed some on the news, even in Huntington, or some of those places, you know, there are, for many people to be in these parks, but they're supposed to be far away from one another, and, you know, how kids are, they're all going to want to be on the slide at the same time?
Actually, we went out, went to a drive-through to get approved, I was like, all right, and we thought, well, where are we going to eat now? So we ended up eating in the, in the car, so I was like, well, that didn't work out, we went to a couple parks, just like the gate slots, all these things, like.
Long time to ride.
Yeah, just eating in the car, so. The other thing, I, I want to go over this sewer plant at Midway, like I said, I'm always the bearer of the news, but one of the really good things that's happened here lately that really, we've been working with the softball coach at Gunn Valley, I think the, he's primary overhead, and he's assistant coach, and a lot of the community members. And the new baseball coach, also at Gunn Valley, he's been working with Mr. Messinger and his crew, we, we've ordered some things, I've got some things coming tomorrow, I had some things coming out of the day, metal, things like that, some of the things that they've done at West Hamlin on those fields at West Hamlin, this has all been community, we've supplied the material, and he was picking up material at home every day, and that was good, been really good working with them, the very, what they're doing. All the concession stands, the concessions over there, all got new roofs, they painted They painted all the concession stands. They put new siding on all of the concession stands. All the dugouts, new roofs. We put all new metal roofs on there. I, we purchased it. I don't wanna take it away from them, but they've done a lot of hard work there. They put all the metal roofs on there. The picnic shelter, replaced all the metal roofs, which I was really concerned with that. Replaced that and the fascia board that was rotten around. We bought all that and they replaced that. Also, the, the restrooms, they put all new roofs on the restroom. We were short some metal, so that metal's come in. It's been sitting over a couple weeks. We're just about the point where they're ready to finish all of it. And they trimmed the trees and all this painting stuff. They've really done a lot of work there. It's really helped our facilities out to where they were really bad shape, so now they've come really back up to where, they'll last us another twenty years, but we have to do it again. So, that was a good thing, working with them on that.
Can we go back to Hamlin? I may have missed something. The GM, the work, are we gonna go ahead? Is planning to go ahead and have the company come in and start?
Well, I want, we gotta get the bleachers out first. That's where we're at right now. Get the bleachers out first. The email I received from him today, he's kind of waiting to see, they've done a playground project somewhere up around Park River. And his guy's waiting for the time where the governor or whoever can say, you can do this. I guess they're working on that rather than coming in from somewhere else. And then our part wants to know when we're ready. I said, well, when you're ready, you let me know. All of me with Ms. Huffman, let her know. Quicker we get those bleachers out, the quicker we can move on that floor. And then, like I said, I wanted to try to move that door around to where we won't hear that water coming back down that main slope that comes in.
And the CEFP process has come to a halt. I did talk to Dave Ferguson one day last week, and he's been talking to the SBA. They are going to move those timelines up. So, I don't know what the deadlines will be, but it's all being pushed down the road.
I know we were at the second meeting with that guy, now we're standing. Let me just real quick, do you have questions?
He'll show us the sewer treatment.
Oh, wow. How funny, he's gonna do something else.
Yeah, we're watching. I used this for a while. I guess I can remember how you take my hose. You stand back there, you turn one on, you'll turn the other on. So, you gotta walk up to them. I said, these are, one of those show you here is a, is a couple issues, several issues while we're dealing with here. We brought this in. This is one of the things that they proposed bolting the walls together. This is cast concrete. So, this is cast, it's designed differently. It's a different type of concrete. I'm not sure you're supposed to be drilling cast concrete. That was my question. They're elsewhere. What their fix was, instead of fixing it properly, just bolt plates on it and let it go. So, these were, and then I called the guy who was wanting keys. I said, well, have you, some of the things that, have you submitted a plan for this when we had, when we found out all these issues we had up there with this wall? And this, what this is, this is the leach bed type area per se, that your sewer comes out on top of it and then it soaks in and then it's supposed to drain out, filter to the creek. So, this is the area that is very important for you to get that in there and then to have it work properly. So, I asked him and he said, well, the contractor deals with the architect. He doesn't have to deal with me or anyone else. So, that's what the contractor told me. So, I set up with Mr. Hall and then he went on, you know, he answered it and said, he wanted to say to hope that the proposed solution would be scrutinized, and I think he meant by the design team, said by the team, before approval, clear myself and you as well. And he called Dave Ferguson and there's been no clarification, nothing on it. So, he just went on and done this. I requested, I sent an email requesting that he have an independent inspection of this facility. After they've done his reports, I asked him, I think the concerns I have, and our sewer plant operators is taking care of it. Kim Ron called me. There was gaps in there and there was actually sewer coming out on the ground. Now, DEP will find us for that. And they can even shut us down if we have issues with it. So, that was my concern with a lot of this. And then I replied back. I haven't heard about them back from you. I've seen him the pictures of it and all these things. I think, in my opinion, it's extremely bad. Why would we replace a new system and then come in and patch the new system up? I think that's unacceptable for Lincoln County schools to have something like that. Again, it's my opinion. Why would we pay for something new as a fact, then then have to come in and patch it?
Do you have an option to that, Greg? Pardon? What would the alternative that be?
Pull it back out and do it right. I hear it said, you look here. You look. I can't see my pen there.
That's weird.
It was down here.
Yeah, I can put it up here. It's away. But if you see the wall, the wall should be square.
Obviously, that's all four of them.
See these gaps where these, where these wall comes together, where this wall fits together? It's kind of like you've got this and then it goes in like this. And it's got, it's sealed. It's got a seal goes in there, goes in tight like that, and it seals it. So, it's all pulled away.
Well, I like that wall that we're looking at there. I see a, is that a gap or the same problem on that?
Yeah, that was the gap. This was their fix. It was gapped. It's all pulled apart. And their fix was, they put these plates in here.
Or is it on all four sides?
Oh, yeah. Well, I got more.
Okay. Well, I just, this one here is, you can see like, probably see that one bowed out. I just wondered if it's true.
And again, on these walls, this is what they've done. They come in and put that pin set in there and it's gonna crack some up. It's already cracking and coming away. So, those are, those are some areas that.
That's to keep the, the plates, to keep the wall from coming apart further.
If it don't break.
Yeah, and then, so you, you know, what should be stress-bearing for the fourth left of the wall, they're reducing to what is it?
I don't know how far down they went with it too. Now, if you see this, this one, actually it's up higher. You're gonna see some more of them. It should be all flush there. It's all up higher.
What's to keep it from occurring further on down that wall?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, it's keeping, I mean, it's supposed to go together. The base of it should have had a base with concrete. Should have sat down and then it locks together. There's bolts that goes down to the top that's poured in that cast to hold it in place.
Didn't ZMM have a cap for them to go by?
I met with Kalina Perry. She came out there and we met and told her it was unacceptable. She was gonna meet with the contractor and I thought, oh, this is the fix.
They should have had a set of specs to go by before they started job.
And that's what Mike was saying about, they're supposed to, they should have provided us with a fix before they done all this.
Yeah.
You see all this stuff here that, and you look at the wall down here. That's on the lower part of the wall.
It's already pulled apart where they put the plate in.
Is the plate there?
Yeah. Wait till you see that plate. Here's the wall here. Now, look at that plate.
What's the health department saying?
Well, DEP hasn't been there yet. The DEP's the ones that will find us and shut us down for this. And then again, look at that. It's just.
It's not only going horizontal, it's vertically separated as well. You can see that in that picture.
Both top and sides.
Yeah.
Well, over time, that, you know, it's just gonna.
Oh, God, that looks awful.
Here's where they put that. This is where I was talking about how they join together with the rubber and all that in the center there. And that's, all the concrete started already coming out.
Okay, now, back to if it were property, if you were having to repair it yourself, what would you have to do?
Dig all that back out?
Put in new wall.
Yeah, put in new wall. I would first go down below there and why is it doing this? Is the concrete, is a poor concrete footer there? Is the concrete footer broken? Is it settled in dirt? Is it gravel? I don't know what the specs were here on this one. I know that something's happening below there causing this.
But you would have to remove everything that's there and do walls, just to see where you have to start all, start all over.
That would be my recommendation. I don't know how you could fix something like this without knowing what's going on underneath.
Now, there's nothing above the ground that would cause it. It has to be bolted.
Yeah, that's that wall themselves there. So, but that, those are, again, some areas I wanted you to be aware of when, if we have issues if you're involved with this. I have, waiting on reply back. I have tried to submit that. I don't know. I know Mickip and I talked about it. I think there's some other counties that the same company that had issues with.
Have we issued the most of the plans? And why? There are common systems, but it's going to issue with this kind of.
Yeah, but what I, what I can't understand, surely they had specs to go by. If they followed the specs, then this is ZMM's problem.
But has this already, if there's a payment, been finalized, all that, yes, everything's done, right?
So, these concrete walls, correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanna make sure I understand. Basically, they, they trap the leach inside?
Yes.
Inside the box, and then the leach, what, filters through the bottom?
Filters through the bottom and then comes out to discharge.
Leach field and by the time it reaches the creek, it should be clean. So, everything we're looking at inside of there is leach. That's sewer.
It's actually, they call it sand, but it's actually, it's actually the volcano rock that's ground up is what it is. Black beauty. You ever heard of black beauty?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Black beauty is what, what this is. Railroad use black beauty.
But where's the sewer? Is it under that or filter through that or?
The, yeah, actually, it's under, yeah, down underneath there.
So, it flows in pipes underneath the blacks up we see?
I don't know. We had one that goes in there.
I saw a big pipe in one of the pictures.
What could seep through that wall right there where the crack is?
Well, assuming it's not cracked below that level, nothing, but just the leaks.
These are your pipes that comes up there. It's like a filter system underneath there.
Uh-huh.
And I don't have a whole lot of pictures of them, but they'll flow and then they come down. It's a pipe to clean out. But they'll flow through there and then flows through the sand filter. It will come up through the sand and then it saturates back down. When they discharge, when the plant discharged what went through the treatment part of it, it discharges into this and then it filters down, goes back out.
So, basically, you have to remove everything inside the walls, pull everything from the outside of the walls back far enough so it doesn't fall in?
Right.
And probably go in, just basically, new footers and new wall, four new footers and new wall.
I would wanna know why it's doing this. And I'm, I would, I would think that footer has gave way or settled, some settlement or something down low has gave way. Or it wasn't, you know, again, it wasn't put up to.
Well, since it's all four walls, it's giving way up in a wide area.
And the company takes care of it. Kim Ron, our company, I asked him. I said, it's bad.
Well, I mean, that's a what, three-inch separation there? I mean, kind of this gauge?
Yeah, and some of those, in between the center, their centers have to be separate. There are two separations. The center has to be separated too. It was really pulled apart, dropped down, and they just filled it in with concrete.
Greg, when he did the final inspection of this, assuming that none of that was visible then, or was ZMM the?
Kalina Perry from ZMM.
And they approved it? Did they approve it?
Yep.
Because that contractor, also.
Is any of it, was any of it visible when they, did you have, did you know any of that was visible then?
When I was up there, when I, I was up there after, yes, it was before they approved it. And I was up there with us and something's gonna be done.
Oh, so you saw this movement before they approved it?
And we can't, reason I was up there, how I saw this, I went up there because in all this water from Midway, we thought we had a water leak. So, I go up there and the sewer operator contacted me. And first he's telling me there's two inches of sewage on the ground. Well, we can't have that. So, I go up there and what happened was, this was after they started them back up, is the floats inside there were bad. So, it wasn't telling the pumps to kick on. So, it just kept going all the way at the top. So, he was in the process of changing all the floats out and then I, and I played, I said, what are you gonna do about this?
Now, at one time, if you, if you're, if you were paying for it all and overseeing it all, you would have given a final approval.
Yeah, I mean, you do the final walkthrough.
Now, with the SBA involved.
I'm sure that there should be some form of warranty here, I'm sure.
Well, I'm just trying to see, with the SBA, do they have the final authority to grant approval of the project being done? Or is that the contractor or the architect or?
Well, according, according to the contractor, they deal directly with the architect. The architect deals with SBA.
I'm trying to see where we fit in this. Do, apparently, we don't have any say in it then.
I'd say we did. It's all school.
Yeah, where are the marks gonna suffer?
Well, I know that, but I'm trying to see, as if, if Greg wasn't there to give his approval when they did the final inspection, say, yeah, it's good to go, then we really didn't have any say in it. Or we didn't have the, my own say.
We didn't have a say at the time, but we certainly do now.
Right.
I think we do now. I don't know why we don't call the SBA and ask them from down and look at.
Right, that's what I requested from Mr. Hall, come down and do the walkthrough on this.
Has he seen these pictures?
We landed here all today's road.
That's why I'm sorry, call bay, yeah.
I mean, it's, to me, why would we replace a sewer plant and then patch it up?
And when it's obvious that they're, I mean, this is about like the handrail over at the, between the soccer field and the school, but you know, the repairs are faulty before they even finish them. I mean, there is a tremendous amount of pressure to bend that steel plate. And it, I mean, it looks like it's pressure from the outside, at least in that, in the far picture we're looking at there. It looks almost as if there's pressure from the outside bowing that in because it's still level, fairly level there. Where would you get that kind of pressure from the outside?
It's, you're gonna have, your pressure should be from the inside more than the outside because you've got all this water that's wetted down that black view. So, your pressure should be here.
Be inside that box.
Yeah.
But what if, like Fred was saying, if that footer's giving way down there, depending on which way, when, it will affect everything with it.
My, my, the concern I have is like, this is what we've got now. What we're gonna have in a year.
Oh, yeah. Does this swap finish last summer?
This hasn't made it summer yet.
But I mean, when was work supposedly completed on it?
It was completed right at sort of school.
Right, so in the last summer was when it's approved, the worst when it's serviced. So, it's not even a year old that's done this. That's.
Well, we have, Greg, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars county money in this project.
County?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Somewhere in there.
But you're saying that, make sure I clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, that when they did the final inspection, which the architect was involved in?
Right.
She sent you the paperwork, that some of this was visible then?
Based on what they had, they approved it for pay.
And some of this was visible then, maybe not as bad?
Yeah.
The way they fixed is not right. I mean, it's on the path.
Well, I'm just trying to understand what it looked like when they, when they gave the final approval. What did it look like then? It showed some issues then, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Get any pictures? I mean, not, not with you, but do you have any pictures of what it looked like just prior to approvals? Is there any documentation of it?
No, that. When ZMM done it, I thought, you know, they've done their walkthroughs and paperwork, so we're done. So, when I, when I noticed it, like when I went up there, when the water was coming out of it because the floats were. And then I went up there and the guy was there and then I called, then all the time I called ZMM and she met me. I said, you know, this is unacceptable. And then I said, then we looked this other, and she said, what if you call the contractor?
You don't really have to get an architect to see if there's something wrong.
The contractor called me to get keys to get in the gate for a weekend and called, I didn't know they were doing the repairs. I was waiting to see what the plans were. How are we gonna address this? So, the contractor calls the one to key get in and I asked, did you submit the plans to the SBA? He said, I don't have to submit plans. I said, well, how are you gonna fix it? And he said, we're gonna bolt it together. I said, ah. And he said, we're gonna bolt it together. I said, ah, I just don't know that that's right. I said, uh, he said, well, we have to deal with ZMM. ZMM's the one that's instructed us.
Do you think even he, once he, if he looks at now and say even his fix is moving?
And I would share with Greg, I know two other counties that's had issues with the same company, different kind of systems, but still issues with this particular company. And the word was that they may be bankrupt.
I see, that, that's why I started asking Greg, favorite bankrupt.
So I mean, that, I, I don't know if, you know, don't know if that was true or not, but that was what was said in, I think it was the last ESC meeting.
Well, that's what I thought I'd heard.
The last ESC meeting.
Well, I, personally, I think it's right now between ZMM and the SBA. Somebody needs to come up with some plan here. Either the contractor comes in and fixes, the contractor's gone, we need to find somebody to come in and fix this for Lincoln County.
Yeah, I think I would start all of it.
That's just.
You have one year, it's, it's not very good.
There's no way to fix it, you might have to replace it.
Well, exactly. And, and I questioned, when I asked him, I said, now, this being cast, if you do cast concrete, it's a different type of brittle type of concrete versus regular concrete you're caught. And cast, you see those, I, this might light work, right there where your hose at? That's, that's threaded to hold these things together. You thread it, and there's a sleeve down, goes all the way down through them. It's, it's poured in the concrete.
They should have poured horizontally to hold it. Okay, Greg, that's, I, uh, thank you.
I wonder if we can get a meeting with, uh, sooner or later, if Roger comes down here or if he's a little up there.
I think they can see that.
And let, let him see, see what it is. So maybe you can meet him.
We'll be happy.
Yeah, I feel like it's, it'd be easy. Meet him at the school and look at it, you know, and, uh, you know, the other part was at the playground area when they dumped all that sand there. We just got a muddy mud hole there, so.
Now, we're gonna get a midway, or Duval?
Did you send one with the Duval boss? No.
Oh, okay, I thought we were saying.
That'd be enough today, wouldn't it?
Do all have the same cast walls and everything else?
No, we're, oh, well, it's.
It's same.
But that, uh.
Is it the same company at Duval?
Yeah.
Same company, same system.
Duval's looks good. Duval look good. It's, it's a little different, a little different plan. The only problem I had at Duval, they didn't hook up one of the panel boxes. We had the red light coming on all the time, we didn't know at the time, and it was going into a, and to come to find out, and this is from Kim on the operator, he said, well, they forgot to hook the panel box up, the pumps weren't kicking on. That's good.
But is it the same system? Is that true?
It's, it's a sewer.
Right, the same way?
It's a little different design than that one is. It's a little different design than the other ones.
But use the same cast walls and everything?
Yeah, yeah, it uses, uh, maybe it's got to get fixed.
You don't have as much pressure on the outside of the one at Duval that you have at Midtown.
Yeah, it's, it's a big difference. More set, it's setting up a little higher. It had actually metal, there was some metal more involved with this than concrete.
You don't have to go back to the pictures, but how much of the cast wall is below that black view? How much black beauty is there definitely?
Your black beauty is down there, it's probably about eighteen inches below it.
Okay.
Eighteen to twelve inches below.
The foot, the foot and a half of black beauty is all we're seeing? That's, it has to be a bad foot. There couldn't be enough pressure internally or externally to move those walls unless the footer's just gone.
Unless the footer cracked or something, it's on filter, I don't know. Something moved below to call this above, so.
All right. Jackson, you keep it surprised.
Don't know what the problem is, it's clearly a big problem.
We may have to involve ways of handling this.
I'll see what they say first. Thank you, Greg. You might have anything else with Mr. Gosney? We really love when you come to see us.
I, I feel bad when I leave more than anyone.
You know, Greg, there's kind of a pattern. You get all this good news for the first ninety percent of your presentation, then you break your heart to the last ten percent.
That's what I was gonna say, ninety percent of his presentation was pretty good there.
Yeah.
It's always when I leave, though, I leave on the bad note.
Maybe you should start on the bad note next time, then that's when you go through all the great.
Started to do it this time, no, that'll start us out wrong.
Thank you anyway. So, good, mostly good, some bad. Okay, now, Mr. Mickey's gonna talk about the GPMS special circumstances report.
Okay, I'll be brief, because we, we haven't really done a lot of work since the school closure took place two and a half weeks ago. I wanted to let you know that we do continue to work on some of the issues related to special education. Dr. Lewis submitted additional documents this week, he's ran back to the department, cleaning up a couple of issues that was spelled out in the report, a couple of lack of appliances. We are kind of checking the boxes with, with some of the action plans and steps that's required. Our school improvement specialist, Kirk can speak to this, because he's been involved, um, has worked about three days?
She has worked three days. She, and what, what Mrs. Staley is doing, folks, is, in speaking with her, she is journaling every day. And when she fin, when she finishes a, a pay period, she submits everything that she's done to me in a Word document journal with her invoice. So she worked three days, and, uh, once the epidemic started, or whatever you want to call what we're going through now, uh, I talked to her and she has suspended her service at this time until we are back into a setting where the teams can meet for students' return. So if you're interested in seeing what she did those three days, it's, it's very journalistic. I mean, she makes a journal, it's very specific.
At some point, Kirk, we'll be able to see, like the, the, uh, the crisis team that we've been to, we'll be able to see what progress has been made with that.
They, they, that was one of, I think, let me check here, I'll have to go look. They, uh, uh, Mr. Snyder was working on that because there's a form that we are using from the State Department that we were not aware of until we started into this. We used the old, uh, crisis team form that was not user-friendly. The State Department has created a new one, and we're using that one now. And, and they were already working on that. Uh, I mean, they, they went right to work, so.
Well, as then, as we transition into a, a new principal here after July, uh, we'll be able, this study will work with that person too, and we'll be able to, uh, see if that's been addressed properly.
Yes, and, and where we were in our process was developing a checkoff list for her to say, okay, I've worked on this. But she's, right, for right now, she's just journaling until we can get that, that checkoff sheet, because that'll be more concise to give you an idea of what she's actually accomplished.
But at some point down the road, we will be able to, even if that's the return of a review, for that matter, to do monitoring, uh, they'll be able to see that that has been corrected.
Yes, yes. It'll be a completed, a form that shows that action step, uh, crisis team, completed date, and then, then there'll be documentation to support that.
All right, thank you.
With the special education, uh, we are still in IEP seasons, uh, and that work continues. I know Dr. Lowe's been working with the schools, the, um, caseload managers, making sure that, that those IEP meetings are taking place, even if it's by phone, um, because we still have the federal requirement that occur. She has put together some instructional packets. Kirk shared with me that, that's in his office, and we'll get into more of that, um, discussion during the home and under comments regarding the work that we're doing while the students are at home. But she, she's also been working on making sure that those students have engaging instructional materials that they can work on. Uh, once we get back, I don't know when that's gonna be, uh, schools open back, uh, when I have, uh, the Staley be here at that last meeting each month. The bottom of the day, where we are. And that's all I have.
Anybody else have anything else regarding the, uh, the special success report? We went over quite good detail a couple of weeks ago, Jeff did, and we had copies of the report itself. Everybody was able to see the corrective action plans that were, that they developed for each item there. I guess what we'll be doing in the future months here, is just trying to make sure that all those things are addressed. That'll be our plan. Everybody's left their sentiments being known, and they are what they are, and we'll just have to try to make sure we correct all those things. Mr. Mickey and I left that day. The idea was that sometime in the latter part of April, everyone would come back and, um, visit the other schools. Who knows when?
Everybody's experienced.
Yeah, just having school here, we don't know that much question, they're gonna get around to doing things like that. We'll just have to take it as it comes, just be prepared to whenever it may come, that we, that things are in order, not only at Guy and Valley, but at all of our other schools, if there are hard issues there. I think that'll be something you guys are looking at, and Kirk and Jeff both, right? To make sure the other schools, the things that were cited at Guy and Valley, that the other schools don't have, uh, those problems. Hopefully, they don't. Okay, anybody have anything else, Mr. Mickey on this? Okay, Jeff, what else you got?
That's all.
Okay, let's move to the administrative section, please. Do you have a motion to the little post? Mr. Baker?
Say.
Mr. Kirk? Mr. Mickey?
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation.
Okay, I'm glad they volunteered, I'm gonna take school, if you're gonna do. They volunteered, is everybody gonna approve of those? Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All right. Okay, let's go to finance, motion please.
I'm a.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith made motion, Mr. Baker seconded, I think it's from ahead of, just to tell.
Schedule of invoices, totally one billion fifty-five thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars ninety-nine cents. There's attachment included, and invoices are available for public review, counting on us.
A lot of money, Kirk. Close to a million, Mark. Okay, we've gotten those, everybody got a chance to look at them. Anybody have any questions? Okay, is that an all yes on the finance invoices?
Yes.
All right, just go to personnel section, please.
Motion.
Sue move.
Mr. Wilson. Second, Mr. Kirk. You will be in, Kirk?
Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B is employment of extracurricular personnel. Item C is leave of absence. And I did not do an update sheet for you today because of where we are.
Wherever that is. All right. Any questions regarding personnel? Is that an all yes on those guys?
Yes.
Oh, yes, on personnel. Okay, now we're gonna move down to comments and concerns. Mr. Mickey, or, uh, board members first, anybody? Let me be first then, get ahead of you, since I have the board. We've discussed the idea of canceling the April the seventh board meeting, uh, and, uh, convening then on the twenty-first. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
Sue move.
Okay, proudly made the motion, Mr. Wilson seconded. Is that, is that an all yes to cancel the April seventh board meeting?
Yes.
All yes, Kirk, okay. So we'll meet on the twenty-first, here next meeting.
We'll get that word out.
Okay, Mr. Mickey?
Several items here. One, one's just a quick reminder that, uh, there will not be a need for a special meeting Thursday. That was set aside in case we have any personnel hearings. Mr. King did such a great job personnel. We didn't have any requests, so that was, that was great news.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, great news.
I'm not sure what he's doing right now.
Well, he's, he's pulling out a sample. You know, our, our meal, you know, that, the last two weeks has really been all about making sure that our students were receiving meals.
I thought he was gonna feed us.
And it's, and it's looked.
Well, you might grab one and do goodbye. What's in that right there?
That's the taco, right?
This is a bean burrito.
Oh, a bean burrito, okay. Is it, must that bean burrito be microwave?
It does, and actually, inside each box is a preparatory sheet on how to prepare every food item that's in the box, if it needs to be heated or however.
And so if that you want to put that in the microwave, how do we know it works?
You just have to trust. You have to trust. If electricity goes out, it might be a little tough, but, uh, we run box so that you can see.
You're gonna get hungry.
And here's the, here's the informational sheet that's in each box, and it tells them how, how long to cook it, how, what temperature. So it's a great reading activity, if nothing else.
Do any of these things have to be refrigerated?
Yes, the, the entire box comes refrigerated. We have to keep it refrigerated.
So, does it tell you that on that sheet?
It does.
Okay, all right. You don't want to let it happen.
Well, the, the, the first week, when we start preparing meals, you know, that was our cooks preparing meals, and our bus drivers were delivering. And then we realized that we wasn't gonna be able to continue, uh, with that format. And the biggest reason was the, um, fact that we wasn't gonna have enough food. So we had to back off on what we were doing, and week two, instead of having to do delivery, we went to just delivering to schools. So we moved everything, all the preparation was onsite at Lincoln County High School. We had volunteers, I think that first go around. I'm trying to remember who all this, uh, we had several volunteers, and I'd say that's, and that's been wonderful, the number of people, our employees and others outside the system who have stepped up the last couple of weeks and helped us with, uh, being able to deliver the meals, but, um, so last week, we prepped the meals at the high school, and then we trucked them out in our, in our trucks to, to the schools for the parents, students to come to the schools to pick up the meals. Well, then sometime in the middle of the week last week, we found out there was an option, because of the concern about not having enough food that was available to the counties, where you could purchase the meals, which Kirk just shared with you, showed you what we received, through a company, um, by the, what was it?
Compass.
Compass Food Company, which was located in Charlotte, North Carolina. And they prepared all the meals, and we, we purchased two thousand meals, and they shipped those meals Sunday to Fairland in Jackson County. And then from there, they were delivered to us yesterday, two sixty-three foot long trailers. So, I mean, the boxes turned out to be much bigger than what they told us. They told us it was only eight inches high. You could see that it's all of them. So, instead of having a hundred and ten boxes on pallet, we had fifty-six boxes on pallet, which made it a challenge yesterday trying to get all those boxes out to the schools. And we pulled it off, and we were late getting to a couple of schools, but we were able to call ahead and let, you know, let them know. But, um, I, we're trying to forget how many meals we had, we had extra. I know that we brought back fifty from Duval, but, and we're not sure about.
Mr. Wilson says it's gonna be close to four hundred.
It is gonna be close to that number?
It is gonna be close to that.
So we, so of the two thousand, we had sixteen hundred of those meals. As you're gonna come up with a plan.
Is that meals or boxes?
Okay, uh, boxes.
Boxes, okay.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry, Sean, good question.
So eight thousand meals, no?
Yeah, cause there's five, there's five lunches and five breakfasts in each one of those boxes.
So sixteen thousand, I guess.
And in, in addition, each student received ten cartons of milk for the week.
So each box contains ten meals, but one for that student for the week, right?
Right, five lunches, five breakfasts, and they get, each family, each child gets ten cartons of milk. So that turned out to be the biggest, uh, challenge of the school, was having, making sure they had enough volunteers to hand out all the, all the milk. But, uh, we, Mr. Roy was sharing with us yesterday that they're gonna change the milk next week, and it'll be half gallons.
That's what Heather does, she sits half gallons.
So, see, you got two crackers, both of them.
We had volunteers, we had two tow motors out there, four cribs, in both of our refrigerated trucks. We had volunteers, we had two tow motors out there, four cribs, in both of our refrigerated trucks. We, I had a bus driver that had a big truck with a flatbed on it, that actually took the bills over to the high school. So it was all hands on deck, uh, yesterday.
Did any of the hands have to be used manually? Jeff pulled three muscles.
Went through several pairs of gloves, cause your hands get really wet.
But I, I wanted to commend all of you all that did that, I know that, uh, Jeff and Kirk were involved in that and Mr. Roy, uh, Jeff Dyer, Chris Browning, I mean, I don't, I don't think things I've heard.
It was, you know, it was enjoyable, I mean, it was, you know, it was a lot of work, but we had a good time doing it and it was such a neat... As I said to Mr. Priestley earlier, so we got to Goodall, the line, um, was stretched all the way around the school, out to the post office, there was cars parked up there near the fire station where the softball field was located. And the rest three hundred meals that we delivered to Goodall, two hundred and fifty of those meals were handled.
Three hundred boxes?
Yeah, I can say that, I, yeah, three hundred boxes, and then, uh...
So twenty-five hundred meals went out of Goodall?
Two hundred boxes were delivered to Midway and they, they, all of them were picked up, you know, while they're at Midway.
That's good.
So we, we, you know, had to come up with a way, you know, we're still continuing to order the two thousand meals and then when we have leftovers, maybe we can use our social workers or volunteers to try to... The meals that are not picked up, find a way to get them out there to them.
Sure as they can refrigerate like here, right?
Right.
Yeah, they are in refrigeration now.
And we'll, we'll get better and we'll find what we're doing.
Now, as far as you know Jeff, is this compass company gonna continue doing this for us or are they definitely?
So, and they're all, they're fully reimbursable.
I don't know how they do it, because aren't they doing for a lot of the school systems?
Sixteen school systems, their cameras are used.
You think of how many's out there?
In West Virginia, sixteen, yeah.
I'm thinking of all the.
And then out of North Carolina.
And you know what the neat thing, and that's the fourth box has been opened, uh, each, it seems like each box was different. I, I opened one up yesterday when the boxes first arrived, that had five ham and cheese sandwiches. And there was some breakfast bars and cereal. I opened up another one later in the day that had two hot dogs, two hamburgers, and a chicken sandwich in there.
Do you take them like just car, 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 is that how you do it?
Just cars come around and give them their box.
Ask everybody stand their car, they just hand them out, that's what.
Everyone's got gloves and masks on, you know, uh, Mr. Roy takes everyone's temperature, you know, to make sure no one is, you know...
You're talking about the people having that.
People handing that.
Okay.
Yes, again.
I was gonna give them a shot, a test while they're going through. Jeff and I were getting tickled, I said, so some of them have hot dogs, some of them have sandwiches, and we're thinking of the family, you got two or three kids and they take it all home, you know? And then the kids get into a big fuss over, you got hot dogs.
Cause you know that happened, you know, or you never what they got, but, uh, anyway, we'll, that was our first go around Monday, so we'll, we'll be doing this every Monday moving forward and, uh... We'll, we'll refine it, so we're, you know...
You guys are gonna get locked up coming this summer, so.
Uh, so, a lot, again, the last two weeks, the focus has been on meal prep and delivery. Yesterday, we had a webinar with the State Department, beginning to transition and focus on continuing to provide our students with, uh, activities that they can do at home, keeping them engaged. And that was an interesting conversation. A lot of the focus yesterday on the phone call was about our seniors, students that are set to graduate this year and what we're gonna do about grades and what, what the credits gonna look like. Our CTE students and their certifications, I mean, there are so many ramifications of what's happening, um, for those kids. We talked about graduation, we talked about prom, I mean, these are all issues or activities that's coming up that we're gonna have to address. Of course, the overarching theme of everything that we're saying this, in this webinar, is these are local decisions. So, you know, a lot of what's gonna happen is gonna look different from county to county. Now, someone in the group, we talked about it here, was, you know, the, some consistency with grades. And you would think that, you know, you'd wanna see that be the same across the state, but that may not be the case. So we, that was the initial conversation yesterday, there's gonna be many more, um, conversations over the next, next few weeks. The superintendents have their own listserv now and we've been communicating with one another since yesterday's meeting, um, talking about ideas and suggestions about what we can do, you know, with all those, um, topics, but, um... Anyway, we, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow with the high schools, we'll focus on the high schools first, and I'm gonna let Kirk, would you kind of share with them what we're gonna, kind of, what we're gonna do.
When we say meetings, of course, we don't mean meetings even like this, we use Office 365 Teams, so everybody's sitting in front of a computer. And if they don't have a camera on their computer, we provide cameras for them to plug in externally, so we can actually see and talk. Uh, and some folks are in their living rooms, some folks are in their buildings, some folks are wherever. So we're using that as a communication and, and the principals and myself have been using that for the last two weeks. And we meet every, well, not every day, but most days at three o'clock. Uh, today will be no exception, if we get out in time, I'll go down, Mrs. Ernings is gonna start the meeting and then I'll catch up and we pass out information. Instructionally, we're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna utilize teams, uh, to have conversations. And what we've done, folks, is we're, we're gonna use our directors to, uh, take on different grade bands or content bands from middle to high school. Uh, we had discussions, uh, once we get to sixth grade, we need to move toward content and not grade level, uh, subjects or grade band. So we, we've identified directors who are going to supervise that and we're gonna ask each school to provide one teacher from each grade level to be on a team and have conversations. And then moving forward, we're gonna develop these engagement activities as a county. Um, that way, we don't have one end of the county doing twenty-six packets during this time and another school doing twelve, um, so that we aren't getting criticized for one school trying to be out there leading and one school dragging their tuppence. So we're gonna, we're gonna bring all of that together and, and have those folks develop those packets. And again, each school will identify one person at each grade level to help make those engagement activities. We're, we're gonna be looking at trying to follow the guidance that was presented during the, the discussion yesterday. Now, when we talk about th- these engagement activities, um, the National Board recommends, the, the National Board of Education recommends, when you're working on activities at home, an elementary child should spend no more than two hours a day, one, between one to two hours. A middle school student, two to three hours. A high school student, three to four hours a day, should, all they should be spending on academics, study, and at least one hour a day doing some kind of outdoor or indoor physical activity. We have not communicated that clearly, and I think that in our effort to be ever-present as teachers, some of our teachers kind of gone overboard. And we're hearing it here at the central office, I don't know if you all have received any phone calls, but, uh, we, we have, we have fielded a few phone calls on the packets and, and some are extreme, um, some that seem to be, uh, not challenging. So we, we've had the, the variance, and that's why we wanna go to that county, across the county, so that everybody is getting basically a common engagement activity per grade, per level.
Kirk? Let me interrupt you there.
Yes, sir.
How do, uh, how do you know what the students have actually done?
Well, that's, that's.
Well, I mean, I, as a parent, I think you've given me, my child too much of this, I'm not gonna make them do it all, or they should be doing more. So there's no way of really monitoring.
There, there is not a way to monitor, this is, and, and this is, this is the whole, the thing that scares us in this office is, this is so uncharted, there, there's no such thing as traditional now. This is, this is, so how, how do you hold someone accountable for something you don't teach, that you don't face to face?
Nothing is returned or any of that.
At this point, we haven't asked for anything to be returned.
I thought even the State Department was discouraging that.
Well, the, uh, initial two weeks was that, you know, you sent those assignments home that we was told not to grade them, you know?
Well, you know, anybody picking them up and bringing them back.
Right, now moving forward, they say, well, you know, if you want to provide students with grades, you know, that's something that's an option. Of course, you'll have to work through the local health department and figure out how you gather the, you know, so I'm thinking, uh, that's not gonna work.
Well, how's a teacher gonna get twenty-five different things returned, they don't want.
And that's, that, again, that's a question that we'll have to work through, it's a good question, but it's still one that's in constant conversation. The, the big concern though, as Mr. Meekip had mentioned, is if you're a senior, if you were a senior fella, let's, let's just say guy, and you're in your fourth nine weeks and you've kind of slept off of your, you were getting ready to push, so you could get those final credits. Well, these activities that these teachers are gonna be putting out there now are gonna be very important and you're gonna wanna turn them in and you're gonna want, and that's, that's been the guidance right now is to use, use these engagement activities to enhance, but not necessarily to be the, the.
It should help kids, it should help kids, their grades, if anything. Only help, that should be punitive.
Can't be punitive.
You know, so, that's the part, again, you know, we're just not really having these discussions about what that would look like, but there's gonna be so many students out there that we won't be able to reach, you know, don't have internet access, it's not gonna be something that we're gonna be able to, to, to be.
Well, you won't be able to give a test of any kind, would you?
So, again, it's, it's, this is all, it, it's kind of scary because this is new, this is gonna be a new way of, I, I, coming out of this, who knows what we're gonna be looking at, but this is...
I don't anticipate that we'll be back, I've been shocked if, you know, if someone gives y'all clear and says it's okay to start school back.
Well, I mean, they've already canceled the twentieth, isn't it, the April thirtieth?
Well, the, the governor went to the twentieth, the president's now said social distancing until April thirtieth, and so that tells you that, you know, that timeline's gonna be extended.
So, I mean, there, after that, there are no, very little schools going on anyway.
Unfortunately, the high school, we had just finished the third nine weeks, um, when, when the governor made his announcement that schools were gonna be closed. So, you know, we have three grading periods, uh, that we can use to average a student's grade for the year. And that's something that we can do, um, and more, you know, probably inevitably that's what's gonna happen. And that's what I'm here for in the other counties, that's what they're working.
That makes sense, doesn't have to, kid that Kirk was talking about there is gonna make it up in the forties.
Well, you have, you can take the two best, three nine-week grading periods and average those. If, if the, if you've been given guidance that you can't, nothing can be punitive, and the, the way you do that is you throw out the worst grading period of the three, you average the two highest.
And try, again, it goes back to consistency, I, I mean, everyone really needs to be on the same page with what we're doing, and I'm not talking.
I mean, how could you, I mean, I'm just thinking about this literally off the cuff, how could you be more fair than that? I mean, past performance is indicative of future performance, but I can see that kid, I mean, I, I may have been that guy that knew down to the third decimal point exactly what I had to have on the, you know, the, the, the fourth nine weeks to get an A for the semester. And, you know, I literally did just enough work to get to that point. So, you know, for that person that, that didn't, well, no, nobody asked for this, but for that person that did screw around one semester, but would have had the opportunity and the ability to make it up in, in another nine weeks by, by, by taking the two best and averaging them, you throw out that one outlier week, it's spot.
Well, the focus right now with, with the webinar yesterday and the kind of discussions that's taken place with, with, uh, superintendents is really just about our seniors, and, you know, your heart goes out to them at this point.
Oh, yeah.
You know, thirteen years, and, uh, possibility of not having a graduation ceremony, or not having prom.
Yeah, I already bought my daughter's prom dress.
You know, my thoughts on that is that we, you know, we don't, that we not jump out there, cause I've heard some counties have already canceled proms, they've canceled graduation.
Don't leave us open as long as we can.
I think we just push it down the road, even if it may, if it's July, I, I just think that's what we need to do. And, uh, and we'll have that discussions tomorrow.
The graduation or prom in July?
Right, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that, I mean, once, once we're told that it's safe, it's okay to add those activities, then that's what we should do.
We'll talk more about this, I think.
We will, um, and, and again, it's, it's a bit early, but graduation's what, the twenty-fifth, I think, I should believe it.
I think that's right, I hope so.
I don't know, do you know what the date was for prom? It's usually early.
But to think you arrive anything in May is totally unrealistic, I mean, totally unrealistic.
Some counties were talking about, in this webinar yesterday, about having virtual graduations, where they were just going.
Going around the house.
I'm picturing all these different scenarios, uh, you know, what that would look like, but I, I still think we need to try to look at moving things a little bit later each year.
And we can see what happens once, when it just depends on how far it goes, but you're gonna reach a point where people are gonna move on with their lives and, uh, you know, come summertime, they're gonna be gone, but...
Yeah, but you'll still catch, if you push it till July, I think that no matter what a lot of the kids say about they don't care about these ceremonies, that if you give them the option of a graduation in July or a prom in July, that they'll make a lot of changes to their plans to, to be able to do that.
No, I've had some parents, you know, that's contacted me and that's, they're concerned, we've had, um, a couple of administrators who have contacted us and.
Please don't cancel it because they've heard counties already canceled.
Yeah, cause it was, I think it was all candidates jumped up there first and then everyone was concerned, you know, about what, what we may be doing there, so.
All right, I've got. For lack of a better description, two, two seniors that, you know, already have prom dresses and are looking for a graduation. So I, I, I'm all for keeping up the oxygen, however, whenever, and just keep that open until we see that we can't do anything.
The seniors that are ball players and things like that, you know, baseballs.
Word ceremonies.
We're gonna have to see what happens, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not, uh, I'm not, not totally optimistic, we're gonna start school next, uh, August, so, uh, we'll see what happens.
I'll tell, I will ju, one more, one more thing, uh, all the financial questions that have come about as a result of what's going on, it's, it's, it seems like there are a few days, uh, Ray and I are receiving, and of course I share everything with Kirk. You know, updates from the department about questions regarding finances, like, you know, governor said if you don't feel safe, you know, you can stay home and work from home and still be paid, and questions about time shoots and overtime. Uh, people who are, who are on, were on leave when this happened, or they take the leave while this is going on. Issues with, oh, uh, people with extracurricular contracts, if you're a bus driver and you had an extra run in the morning and the evening. Uh, and, and we, we're continuing to pay them just as if that was still happening today. So there's been, what, two major documents has been shared with us, frequently asked questions, that's been shared with superintendents and, and, um, treasurers. And another one's on its way, we've been told, uh, because of additional questions that have come up. But I, I think we'll be dealing with those kind of issues for months, I mean, this is.
Was it, is that the one that Howard Sugar tried to respond to those, was that the one he did?
He may have included.
Something I've seen where a lot of those same questions were asked and, and there were answers to them, but I don't, they probably gave them.
So the, uh, there's, there's been many, many, um, questions come up with, uh, what we're doing.
Well, you're talking about finances, how much longer the state is gonna get money to send those? I mean, you, cause you know the revenue's gonna be way down.
You got two things that you can't with, which to me like, one is this year we're in now, that we're anticipating to get X amount of dollars, and now bringing that dollars in, um, is it gonna reach a point where it's gonna be reduced for the current school year? And then next school year, you know, we got the preliminary comps back in January or December, how much were they anticipated for next year? Well, you know, those aren't gonna be right, but it's my understanding that we're continuing on the budget process as we currently are, is that right Jeff?
Yeah, so the timeline's still the same. Yeah, so the timeline's still the same for the development of the...
So, that just means to me that if they want us to submit a budget here in May, or whenever it is, based upon if we, if, if nothing had happened, which only tells me one thing, as soon as next year starts at some point, they're going to come in and tell you to cut your budget ten percent, or twenty, whatever it is, just like they used to be when they would come in and tell us to cut our budget five percent or ten percent during the school year. I mean, there's no other way around it, and here, that affects us locally, too, they're not collecting any taxes here in Lake County.
And how often does, uh, Lake County send us, month, every month? And you know that's not going to be what predicted the ban?
They're not collecting any.
Instead, we're going to hurt our excess there.
I mean, so I, it looks to me just, the fact that Jeff found out that we were supposed to go ahead and proceed with our budget for next year on schedule, it's just they want to have a baseline to start with, so that they'll know, once they have a better feel, what collections have come in, how much you want to be reduced next year, but it's not going to be the same. Nobody knows that, do they?
No, no, we don't, we're just going to... I can't think of anything else, I'm going to share with you today, Kirk, we've covered that. We'll have more information on the twenty-first, we definitely will have a plan by the twenty-first in terms of what we're going to be doing with grades, because again, I had the conversation yesterday with just about seniors, you know, we, we have all our other students as well out there that, you know, we're just going to have to do some guidance there.
Well, the twenty-first is three weeks away, so to the, see, I mean, I, I, I'm all in agreement with canceling meetings or even spend money for us to have a meeting with nothing going on, but I think maybe we, we might need to be kept abreast by email or something, because there are a lot of different pieces to these puzzles. The food services, the, all, all the pay things you talked about, graduation grades, um, that may, I mean, unless you all think it's too much work, maybe a weekly or twice-weekly update on just the status of all of these different things to us, because, you know, people want to know, and...
Should you some on Fridays, maybe?
That, that'll be fine, um, I mean, I'd just like to, to have, I, I don't want to come in here in three weeks and see that the, that, that the landscape we left on today has totally changed, and we didn't know anything about, not, not that you wouldn't update us anyway, and, and, I mean, I said, I don't, I want to add, I know that those of you all that are still working are under tremendous stress from so many different levels, but just something short, make an update like you gave us here, like you all gave us in the last fifteen, twenty minutes, um, just ball points, because we do get a lot of questions, and, um...
We do, and this helps, being here today, I've learned a lot today that I didn't realize that was going on, and...
We'll keep you updated.
If anybody has any particular questions arise, you, you know, Mr. McKeef, if you're calling, and...
Yeah.
Look, if we, I know the number of questions we have filled is just...
Yeah, I'm just, yes, we get these things, emails from, some from the School Board Association, some from the department, anywhere in the, some of the same thing, you're being, uh, obviously everywhere, so... Notice people, but at least we don't have any personnel hearings. That's a good thing, sure Leslie's happy about that. Or she's brought hearings to other counties, you know? Wish them well. Okay, that it? That now, anybody else have anything else? Okay, if not, then listen adjourned to April the twenty-first.
No, let me just stop you, we don't need an executive session, it's set forth on the agenda, okay, great, great. No problems.
Stop the presses, wow.
No complaints, first meeting in how long, Sean, without an executive session?
I'd sit four months.
I'm not complaining, I am not complaining.
Oh, I expect a thumbs up.
I maybe, we'll see, we'll see.
Okay, uh, adjourned to April twenty-first, twenty-twenty at six P M. Rowdy, I believe, and Mr. Ruperson was second.
I'm not sure that was a perfect harmony.
Oh, I guess?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think we were perfect harmony on that one.
I'll give it to you, okay.
You got video of it, right?